Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting into order. I want to welcome you to the Midwest City Council Meeting, the January 28th, 2025 version. Thanks for everybody being here. I appreciate it. I'd like to welcome some special guests tonight. Cadet West from Carl Albert High School, or Carl Albert, right, or Midwest City? Yeah, I thought it was Carl. Sorry, Matt Sargent. Carl Albert High School, Cadet West, he's a, she's a sophomore and plans to be a veterinarian and attend OSU.
Our folks in the U.S.
I told you you had some fans up here. Cadet Stewart, freshman at Carl Albert, plans to go in the United States Air Force. And Cadet Thompson is a senior. Life is fixing to start for her pretty quick. She's a senior at Carl Albert and plans to go in the United States Air Force. And this guy's got a long row ahead of him. Cadet Seabert, freshman at Carl Albert, plans to be a cardiologist. Can you say student loan? I would ask all of you to rise for the invocation and the presentation of colors. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, good, rise.
Go ahead.
Jibah with me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the beautiful weather we had today, Lord, and we give you glory and honor for that. Thank you for this great city that we serve and this council that are willing to serve this great city. Father, I ask you bless them in their decisions tonight. Give them your wisdom and your discernment, peace in their decisions as well. Father, this, we know this evening, this great nation has many who are abroad, serving to protect and guard our freedoms. We ask you to protect them as well. And Father, their families while they're away also. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and the sacrifice that both of you made on our behalf. It's in his name I pray. Amen.
Up, rise. Read it. Colors.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harry, colors. Right step, march.
What do you all think of those young people? Thank you guys for being here again. Good luck in your future endeavors. We now move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Have a couple announcements tonight. The Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast had to be rescheduled due to weather, and it is scheduled for February 1st, 2025, starting at 7:30 a.m. at the Reed Center. This year's theme is Mission Impossible: Protecting Freedom, Justice, and Democracy in the Spirit of Nonviolence 365. Tickets are still on sale for, at the Midwest City Community Center. They're $30 each, $300 for a table of eight, or a sponsorship of either $2,500, $1,500, or $1,000. For more information, you can contact our city attorney, Don Marsh. Our Daddy Daughter Dance is February 22nd at 2:30 p.m., 4:30 p.m., and 6:30 p.m., three different sessions at the Nick Hara's Midwest City Community Center. Go to the Midwest City website for details and to buy tickets. The VIDA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is starting up. Free federal and state tax preparation by IRS-certified volunteers will take place at the Nick Hara's Community Center beginning February 4th through the end of the tax season. Appointments can be scheduled, and it's by appointment only. Appointments can be scheduled by calling 405-739-1239 on Tuesdays and Thursdays between 12:00 and 5:00 p.m. to schedule an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. We now move into consent agenda of our council meeting. Charity entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 6, and ask that it be pulled and heard in regular order. I have a motion and a second. Does that include also pulling Item 6?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve and pull Item 6. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. I'll pass the gavel to my Vice Mayor, Pat Byrne, and I will recluse myself.
So, Item Number 6, Discussion, Consideration of Possible Action: Declaring Two of the City's Five Transitional Housing Program Properties Surplus and Authorizing the Mayor, City Manager, and/or His Desert Need to Enter Into the Necessary Contracts to Implement the Proposed Disposition of These Properties. Ms. Kraft.
Honorable Vice Mayor and Counsel, the Transitional Housing Program has provided safe, sanitary, and affordable housing to families experiencing homelessness or risk of being homeless for the past 28 years. Case management has been provided by a variety of Metro Homeless service providers. The program has been successful. I feel like we've done a lot of good in the community. However, we can't support the program on rent revenue anymore, and so we're looking at probably doing away with the majority of the properties, and the properties we're bringing to you tonight are two single-family properties. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We're transferring them, correct?
One of them, we'd like to sell on the market so we can replenish one of our funds. The other one, we'd like to convey to a partner in the community.
Who's the partner?
Leah's Hope at this time.
And Matt's, Matt, the mayor's wife serves on that board, so he stepped down.
Is there a representative from Leah's Hope that's willing to step up here and tell us they'll take the house?
Sure.
Hello, I'm Brittany Hussein, the Executive Director for Leah's Hope here in Midwest City. I didn't hear your question. I just heard there's a.
Do you want the house?
Absolutely, yes. We would be happy to utilize that house for our program, for sure. Any other questions?
I don't know that we really have a chance on what Leah's Hope is.
Oh, yeah.
So, if you might just explain a little bit.
Absolutely. Leah's Hope is a nonprofit here in Midwest City that serves women who are in crisis, who are homeless or facing homelessness. Most of the women in our program are survivors of domestic violence, and Leah's Hope offers a 12-month transitional housing program to help, really help them create stability for their family, whatever crisis they're coming out of, to help them create stability financially with employment and parenting and several different facets, life skills, things like that.
You have a fundraiser turning up, too, don't you?
We do. On Friday, February 21st, is our fundraising luncheon. So, we do have some information on our website, if you, if you'd like some information on that.
And your website is?
I have a question for me.
Ms. Kraft, the two that we're talking about making surplus property, which one is the one that she's referring to?
It's the one located on Crosby Boulevard.
Is that the one that the bank gave us, or is that the one that we?
That's the one that we bought initially with federal funds.
And the reason we're making a surplus is because the city cannot afford to?
Well, the, we had a big sewer backup last spring. It reminded us how expensive everything is in the, in the economy nowadays. We were able to clean it up and get it sanitized using insurance proceeds, but that's as far as we could take it. The rehab costs were anywhere from $50,000 to over $100,000, and it's just wasn't something we could pursue.
So, that would leave us with two, with three properties for transitional living?
Right.
Are we, are we planning to keep those going a while, or are we going to have to end up surplusing those also?
I think we eventually will surplus them, too. That's how we have to be able, in order for us to convey those properties, we have to declare them surplus. I don't think we're ready to do that today, but probably within the next year or two.
We're going to work with Leah's Hope to transition those houses to them.
And I, I'm glad to know that Leah Hope is interested in the property. I had a Batters Program, and I think it's very important what you're trying to do. So, that's, that's a positive. Thank you.
May I approve?
Have a properly formed motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Passes.
Thank you, guys. My wife sits on the Board of Directors, so that kind of excludes me from that discussion. But what Brittany failed to tell you is the fact that Leah's Hope is a Midwest City-grown organization, started here by Marla Hardy, and it's grown and grown and grown. They do great work over there, and thank you, Brittany, and everybody involved. Appreciate it. Okay, now we move into the discussion items of our agenda. And Mr. Lyon?
Discussion item number one, Discussion, Consideration of the Community Survey Conducted by ETC Institute. And Josh Ryan is here, along with representative from ETC that conducted the survey. Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. The last, what is commonly referred to as a resident survey, but is better known as a citizen satisfaction survey, was conducted in 2014 for Midwest City residents. And obviously, it was time to kind of refresh that information. These are key indicators, key measures in our community that we can take a look at to see how we're providing services to our residents and how our residents actually feel about their community as well. Fortunately, we had a great partner last time. We had a great partner this time, the same partner, ETC Institute, who we contracted with last year to conduct a survey toward the end of September and in early October. And we did very well on that survey. I'll let Robert Haycock, who is the Senior Project Manager that I worked with, tell you more about the results of that survey. But first off, I want to say thank you very much to the residents of Midwest City. They responded very quickly. We actually got more responses that lined up with what ETC Institute needed to get a really good cross-section of our community, and all of that data is actually in the, the survey results that were provided to you. They got a look at this community that, that really takes a slice from every part of our community, and that's what's exciting about it. So, Robert Haycock?
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager, it's a pleasure for me to be here. As Josh said, my name is Robert Haycock with the ETC Institute. We're located adjacent to Kansas City. You might know it as a place hopefully we'll have a three-peat in the Super Bowl soon, but fingers crossed. So, Donna's going to be helping me in the back there, and I'm going to say slide, or I'm going to lift my, my finger up, and she's going to advance the slides as we, as we progress here. Next slide. Just give you a footprint of, of our company and the work we've done. We're one of the largest marketing, research companies in the country, focusing primarily upon counties and cities across the United States. You can see there, in the last 10 years, we've actually surveyed more than 3 million people in 49, actually, it should say all 50 states now. Next slide. Our agenda for this evening is, very quickly, to give you the purpose and methodology of why we were doing the survey and how was the survey conducted. We're going to focus on the bottom line upfront, the major conclusions that we took away, major findings, summary, and then open for questions. The purpose for every city to pursue a citizen survey can be slightly different. This is sort of a generic list that we, we share, to objectively assess citizen satisfaction with delivery of city services. That's really important, because a lot of times, we don't get that objective, statistically valid cross-section of the community. What we hear from is a group of people who, while they may be very impassioned about the particular issue, don't represent the entire community. So, it's an opportunity to engage the entire community and get some good, positive feedback. We want to compare your performance with residents in other communities, regionally and nationally. And I'll say right off the bat that your community did quite well when you look at those comparisons. We're also going to measure trends from the 2014 survey that Josh mentioned, and to help determine priorities for the community moving forward. There's a lot of information on this one particular slide. I'll go quickly. I'm not going to read every line, but it gives you a rundown of, of the survey. It was a survey that we, we mailed it out, and we also made it available online. So, we had a lot of folks that, that prefer it in each way, so, so to get the maximum representation, we, we used that hybrid approach, if you would. Our goal was 500. We actually exceeded that and had 517 responses. That produces a plus or minus 4.3 margin of error, which is really good. If you are familiar at all with surveys, or we just went through an election cycle, a lot of times you'll see the standard is kind of 5%. So, if you get a participation level, as you did, that brings that down to 4.3%, that's even more, more reliable in terms of, of what the data represents. Next slide. So, the bottom line upfront, really, residents have a very positive perception of the city. They feel very satisfied, especially with public safety. We're going to get into these a little bit more, so I'm not going to try to read them. But the trends highlight the opportunities really for growth and development. You see that there were some decreases, but overall, talking with Josh, the opportunity is there to really focus, and I know the city's going to focus on the future and moving, moving ahead. Satisfaction levels are significantly higher than the national, regional averages, and we'll go through those specifically with particular slides, so you can see the comparisons. But it's very impressive and a sign of, of how hard you're working. Sometimes when we say, well, only 75, we say only, people might say 75% or 73% of the community are satisfied with police services. That may seem low. We might want that to be higher, but if you look at, as I go through the numbers, we'll see why that occurs and, and really how overall your, your numbers still stack up really well compared to, to other communities. Next slide. So, the residents do have a positive perception. Next slide. Now, as we go through here, we're going to have a number of slides that are going to be broken down this way, that you're going to see, even though it's a five-point scale, plus, don't knows, if that's applicable. You'll see in the dark blue and light blue, those are generally very satisfied or satisfied responses. The red, we combine into one to kind of maximize that. It doesn't matter if it's very dissatisfied or somewhat dissatisfied. They're all combined in that, that red category. But what I want to point out, Mr. Mayor, before we get into all the specifics, is focus a little bit on the, on the gray area, the neutral. We see there at the bottom, where you do have about a third of your residents say that they're satisfied, or dissatisfied with the enforcement of city codes and ordinances. You've got another third of your community that says they're neutral. Now, to us, that is oftentimes a sign of, of a need for communication, more information. People will have an opinion. If you stop and think about it, you took the time to fill out the survey, to share your opinions, only to say, I don't have an opinion. So, that's when they're, they're saying I'm neutral. A lot of times, they may not know, they may not understand what the city has really done to move the needle on code enforcement or on certain maintenance issues, maintenance of streets. Maybe they're not aware of the, the overall plan to improve the city's services in that way. So, keep an eye on that neutral, because a lot of times, people will just focus on the dissatisfied and try to focus on bringing that number down, when really, you'll find it more productive focusing oftentimes on those that have said neutral. Next slide. Again, perceptions of the city. So, Midwest City has a place to live, and you see there, quite a high percentage of 73%, I believe, overall, is a place to live. Quality of life was 66%. So, did quite well on, on almost all of those, except you do get down to the bottom, where about a third showed dissatisfaction with the overall appearance of Midwest City. Next slide. Residents feel very satisfied with public safety. In particular, we're going to go over those. You see here, again, not going to read all of those, but you look at the bottom, the quality of juvenile services. You can't expect everybody in the community to be familiar with those, but again, about half of the, half of the respondents said that they're neutral on that issue. Perhaps if that's an issue that's important to you, if you want there to be a greater understanding of what juvenile services you do offer as a community, you might use that as an opportunity to look at and step back with staff. What are we doing in terms of information, and, and how can we change that perception? But overall, you see the community is very, very happy with the overall quality of police services, police protection. All of those did quite well. Next slide. Same thing with fire services. Actually, you see hardly any, any dissatisfaction at all until you get down to the bottom line there, which is disaster preparedness and public education. And again, one-third of your, your citizens just may not really be aware of what's going on with, with emergency preparedness, so they, they indicated they were neutral. But you had 92% who were satisfied with the quality of fire protection, and quality of VMS was 90%. So, right there, within that margin of error. Next slide. So, now we get into 911 services. Similarly, very positive feedback. And in these slides, or these, these questions, actually, a little bit less in terms of neutral. Overall, people seem very happy with response times and all those different categories. Next slide. Ambulance services, again, kind of mirroring 911 a little bit. Quality of, of care from the health personnel, from the ambulance personnel, very, very positive with, what is that, 74% being very satisfied or satisfied. Next slide. Overall feeling of safety. So, we asked for different, different times of day. We asked in your neighborhood during your day, in your neighborhood at night, overall in the city, in commercial retail areas, and then in city parks and trails. You do see at the bottom there, city parks and trail and recreational areas, there seems to be some issue there and concern on the part of the public. So, that might be an area where that you say, remembering that this is just a snapshot in time, okay? It, it doesn't really show the whole picture. And, and we caution people not to jump to certain conclusions without looking at how you're going to follow up on this, how we'll get better information. It might be more dialogue with the community in different ways. It'll, that'll give you better information on, on how to address that particular concern.
Can I pause you for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
As we're rolling through these, can you refresh my recollection and maybe at least the audience's recollection on what it is to say you're neutral on this category? Is that I have no opinion, or what? Because when I'm looking at the data from this, if I add the neutrals with the unsafe or the unhappy category, when I add those two numbers together, going back to all the different slides you've kind of run us through, they're almost equivalent to what I have on satisfied or very satisfied combined together a lot of times. So, what is the definition of neutral, to answer the question with neutral?
Sure. The, the categories that we actually, there actually was a fifth category called don't knows, and for comparison purposes, we have to exclude the don't knows. So, keep that in mind, that I, I think it's just the folks are, are telling you that they, they don't really have a positive or negative opinion. It may be that they don't have interaction with that particular service, or they, they don't have an opinion. But I, I would treat the, the neutral just as a neutral. I wouldn't, I wouldn't combine it with the positives, or I wouldn't combine it with the negatives. I would say that it's, it's an indication that, like I said before, not to repeat myself, but a lot of times, people just aren't that familiar with it. Maybe they need more information, or they just, they, they just kind of, yeah, that's kind of middle of the road. Maybe they're edging one opinion that they want to register.
So, the don't knows were, the don't knows were excluded from the satisfaction?
For most of the questions, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, again, I'm sorry, not to belabor the point, but so neutral, how was that defined in the survey? As I have no opinion, like versus I just don't know, I have no familiarity with this?
It, there, there, we don't provide a key in terms of, to suggest what people should think with that. We simply list those as the options.
Okay. So, the option was like very safe, safe, neutral, unsafe, or don't know?
No, the, actually, the options were very safe, safe, neutral, unsafe, or very unsafe.
Okay.
And, and don't know. Those are the options.
So, very unsafe and unsafe got combined. Okay. But on the other questions, there was a don't know category, and you excluded those results?
Most of the ti, and you'll see at the, at the top there, by percentage of residents excluding don't knows. So, if, if don't know was an option, which it is in most cases, we don't include those because it, it complicates and invalidates a lot of the, the benchmarking opportunities that we try to do later on that you're going to see.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just still confused, because like, like you said, at the top, it says excluding don't knows, but you're telling me that like on this one, you had very safe, safe, neutral, unsafe, and very unsafe. So, what was excluded then?
No, it's for, we took out anybody who, there was another response option that said don't know. That's not shown in this data.
Okay, that's what I asked, but you said that was one of the, one of the keys, that you didn't explain a legend, or you didn't provide a legend for what it means, but it wasn't an option for this particular result we're looking at, on feeling of safety. But it was an option.
Yeah, I apologize if I wasn't clear, council member.
Okay.
If, if we, if we said don't, if we say at the top excluding don't knows, that means don't knows was, was asked, and it was, that data's not, not reflected in what you're seeing in front of you in the terms of the percentages for those responses.
Okay. And likewise, on unsafe, you're saying the option was very unsafe also, but that's, either it wasn't answered, or you just combined that into unsafe?
We combined those two in, in our presentation of the data, and we say, it says if somebody marked a one or a two, unsafe or very unsafe on the, on that scale. To highlight it more than anything, we don't want to minimize the negative. So, our idea and concept of our portrayal of the data is to, to highlight both of those together, to, to highlight them really as a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, was this the one, are we on to the next one, or is this one? There we go. Major finance. And now, we're really going to be able to, to hone in and see, I, because I think sometimes we can look at our own data, and you, you're only focused on, on yourself. What, what does that do to you? I think sometimes you could say, well, 50% of the, of the public responded that they are very satisfied or satisfied with street maintenance, okay? And 80% said that they were satisfied with parks. Well, without any comparative data, you might say, well, then we really got to focus on streets, and parks are doing great. But what if the average is 95% satisfaction for parks and 30% for streets? That means you're, you're kind of chasing your tail there a little bit. So, next slide. We're going to go through here, this is on major city services. There's a lot of data here, but I want to, want you to focus out. Midwest City is portrayed in the dark blue or purple color. The Plains region, which includes 11 different states, in, mainly in the Midwest here and north, is in the light blue, and then the US average is in, is in the gray. So, if you look at that, in terms of public safety services, you, you had an 87% satisfaction, where they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, and compared to the Plains region is 72%, and compared to the national average of only 65%. So, you see in almost every one of these categories, you're far, far ahead of these other, which should, should make you feel really good. I mean, I think it's a very positive thing. I do a lot of presentations for various clients, don't always get to present this positive picture in terms of how you compare. Some are just harder to do well in than others. Some categories, it's more difficult to, to do that. You see, code enforcement is one of those where everybody's kind of grouped together. I sort of think that code enforcement is kind of like the cafeteria food of city government. It's one of those categories that no matter what you do to make it tasty for the students, people are always going to complain about the cafeteria food. So, but you see right there, you're slightly behind, but really within the margin of error on, on those at the bottom. Next slide.
On, on public safety, so we ranked highest in public safety services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And how did we, what types of questions did we ask? Was it, do people feel safe in the community, or was it clearance of crime rates, or?
I believe in this particular comparison, we're asking the overall satisfaction with that particular service.
Yeah. And that's obviously an issue a lot of municipalities across the country are struggling with, and here, we are actually doing really great at that. So, thank you, Tim, our police chief, and our law enforcement agents. It's a difficult one across the nation. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. So, now we get into, next slide. So, now we asked about perceptions of the city. We said, how would you rate the, the image of your community, effectiveness of city management, leadership provided by local elected officials, and appearance of a community? And again, in all of these, except for, it seems to be a recurring And again, in all of these except for it seems to be a recurring low rating is the appearance of the community, as you saw before in a different slide. In this particular, you are seven points lower than the national average in terms of appearance of a community, but then you look at some of those up above, effectiveness of city management, leadership by elected officials, clearly, there's some trust here, some, some positive feelings of your, your constituents regarding how the city is overall running, that's a very positive, very positive feedback. Again, not everybody gets the high ratings, and it's, it's a sign of achievement, I think, that you should be proud of. Next slide. Now we're looking at city maintenance, so we're looking at particular items here, not an overall satisfaction, but we're looking at things like adequacy of street lights, condition of landscaping along public streets, some of those particular issues, conditions of streets in your neighborhood, and then you get down below to condition of pavement markings on streets, which every, almost everybody's about the same, you do see that you're, you're higher than others in a couple of categories, like condition of major streets. Next slide. So police services, again, we broke this down specifically into different ways, and look at that in terms of overall quality of police services and response times, I mean, you're just, you're not lapping the field yet, but you're doing really, really well in terms of, of the, the public perception of your, of your police services, police response times, visibility, all of those ranking higher, you do get down below and, and still you're, you're doing quite well. Kind of equal with the Plains region when it comes to the enforcement of local traffic laws, but at, at public safety education programs, and there's probably, if we went back a, a number of slides, you'd probably find a fair number of people were neutral in that category, but the overall satisfaction level is being 51% compared to 34 in the Plains region and 37 in the US national average, that's really outstanding. Next slide. I was going to say, I did have a chance to talk to your police chief prior to the meeting, and, and he had told me how he had come up through the ranks being with the department, how that's kind of been an effective approach that's worked for the city, and you can tell, when, when you have organizations that are working well and have good leadership from the top, from the direction they're given from the council, all the way down through the department, you can really see how it reflects and it translates to the citizens' perceptions. Now we get into police and ambulance services, again, all very positive here, I mean, there's just, there's not a category where, where you're not statistically significantly ahead of, of others. You look at fire education, that's one of the hardest areas really to, to move the needle on and, and for people to understand that, but whether they grew up here or whatever, they, they have an understanding and a, and a perception of the fire education programs are, are really prominent and effective, so at, at almost 70% compared to 43% for the Plains region, again, is outstanding. Next slide.
I have a question, the, the group that you're comparing us to, the Plains region?
Yes, sir.
Is that every city in the Plains region, or just those that you, your company has done a comparable survey in?
Yeah, neither, to confuse, we, we do a separate survey, so just like you would do a national survey for who's ever running for president or some national issue, we do a nationwide survey, and that's the, that's a survey that we do for those states that fall into that category. So there might, I, I believe there's 11 states that are in the Plains region, and...
So this, this would have included cities like Enid?
Well, we, we, again, we did...
Topeka, Kansas?
Yeah, Kansas, Nebraska, Illinois, you know, up to the Dakotas, Michigan, and Minnesota.
Okay. I just noticed that your particular company was skewed heavily into Kansas City and?
Yes, sir.
Dallas and Miami, Florida, and I was thinking, you know, are we being compared to those cities in this, or if, but I think you answered the question.
Yes, sir, no, and, and we do, I should, I should point out, we, we do a new survey every 18 months, so the survey that you're compared to, the survey you took in, in September, October, we did the, the survey you see you're being compared to, we did in February of '24. So otherwise, if you, if you were trying to compare you to actual cities that have done the survey, you get into timing, like how long ago was theirs, was there pre or post COVID and all of that, so it makes comparisons difficult. Yep. Next slide. Or is this the next slide? So we get into sanitation and public works, again, not to be a broken record, but, you know, again, you're very, very ahead of, of the, the results in these other areas, particularly if you look at trash garbage collection services, 90% satisfaction is, speaks volumes. Next slide. So we asked about overall ratings, again, this is the perception, so as a place to live, well ahead of other areas, a place to retire, still, you know, very impressive, a place to raise children, you get into the issue of a place to work, you're, you're more level with the other surveys, but certainly within the margin of error. So, you know, ahead of, of, in the other categories and, and even, I would say with those last two. Next slide. Overall, so we look at particularly communication, I guess that's because that's Josh's job, not sure why, we, we never look at communication, I'm just kidding. So communication, overall quality of the city's website, again, all of these, you're ahead or within the margin of error of, of the others, and I will say too, though, that cautionary note on some of these, and I, I alluded to it a little bit before, but when you look at things like the city's website, sometimes I'll give a results and, and they're not doing very well, and they say, we just did a brand new website, that's because there can be a lag from the efforts that you're making to when it actually shows up in the scorecard and the survey, so just keep that in mind. Next slide. So I won't belabor this too much, but one of the things that ETC created was something called an important satisfaction index, or the IS rating, the important satisfaction index was created because we realized if we only ask about satisfaction, but we leave out importance, we're really not telling the whole story, and we're not giving you the best data to, to look at how you're going to move forward with. So the example that I use is, let's say that the, the mayor takes his dog to the dog park, and the dog gets chased around and beaten up by the, a couple bigger dogs, if you, if you ask the mayor later, how satisfied are you with the dog park? He'd, he'd say, no, I don't like the dog park, it's really bad, or let's say a regular citizen says that. So the regular citizen says, I'm very dissatisfied with the dog park, of all your, your park services, I'm least satisfied with dog parks. Well, you might take that data as city council wanting to act on that and say, well, we need to invest in the dog park then, because we've got people that are saying they're very dissatisfied, but when you correlate that with how important is it to you, you might get a different answer. In fact, a lot of people might respond, well, I don't, I don't think you need to spend money on the dog parks, I'm, I'm not happy with it, but that's not my top priority, really rather you put it into youth athletic programs or other types of activities like that, so keep that kind of in mind is why we came up with this and, and what it represents. So we, we show you rankings in two different ways, we have the satisfaction ranking, and then we have the most, the, the importance ranking, and then from that, you'll see if it has a red arrow attached to it, that, we, we think that's a significant area of focus for you moving forward in your discussions about city priorities of funding and investments and, and how to, how to, how to improve your scores overall. So you look at here, when we look at the, the major categories of city service, the two that really highlighted, and, and you see that as a very high priority and high priority, medium priority, sometimes there's a low priority on there too, but the overall maintenance of streets, buildings, and facilities, and overall enforcement of city codes and ordinances ranked, ranked first and second respectively. Next slide. We look into city maintenance, you can kind of see that breakdown as well, again, if you're looking at specific feedback, it would, our advice would be look at the timing of traffic signals, condition of major city streets, pedestrian accessibility, and traffic flow on major streets, those are the four areas that jump as a high priority for the citizens. Next slide. Again, here now we're looking, even though you scored really, really well, sometimes, you know, I would say that the, the thing that citizens might tell you is that, I'm really happy with it, but it's still really important, that means they want you to continue to fund that, it's not always just throw money at the problem, it's, sometimes it's, you're doing really well, and we don't want to lose status, so keep that in mind as you look at through some of these. But the visibility of police in neighborhoods and efforts to prevent crime, those, those are ranked one and two. Next slide. And then fire service, again, doing really well, but the one that came up that we talked about before was disaster preparedness, public education, at least that doesn't have the, the overall visibility or satisfaction of the other four areas. Next slide. Code enforcement, neighborhood services, you can kind of see all of those, major areas of concern. Next slide. We get into animal welfare, welfare services, again, you have a couple of high priorities there. Next slide. And a lot of categories of different things, 17 different items listed under parks and recreation, and quality of city parks, picnic pavilion areas, playgrounds of city parks rank number one and two of all the, of all the issues. Now you might say, well, what does that mean? Quality of, of parks could be anything, Robert, well, again, this is just, you know, this is just an entree into future discussions, the, the survey results were not intended to give you, you know, everything, but it's, it's in, you know, wanting to point you in the right direction and connect with the citizen's feedback that we received. Next slide. We asked a couple of other different questions too, we asked a, a question about perception of, of being treated equally within the community, do people agree or disagree with that? We asked about residents receive the same educational opportunities, you had 60, I think 66% that, that said they strongly agree or agree with that. You get down to the bottom, all residents receive the same treatment in the justice system, about a fifth of your citizens disagreed with that statement in some, in some level. But overall, you know, fairly high level of agreement, and again, a, a high number of neutrals. Next slide. We then finally asked, how easy or difficult was it to address your issue? So this is a customer service issue which you ranked very well with, well on, and you see here, 78% of the citizens that responded said it was either very easy or somewhat easy to resolve their issue. Only 22% said it was difficult or very difficult to address their issue. And with that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
I have a question.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hank, please.
Yes.
Of, of the 517 people that were called or approached through the survey, is that kind of the normal size of percentage of population?
I'm, and, oh, the, how did we come up with, we look at the census, so when we developed the sample, we send that out to, we send it out to a lot more people than respond, so typically we might, I don't know how many here, we might have sent out 4,000, but we base that on the census, and so demographics in terms of, of race and age and different factors, we're making sure that not only designed, but then as the feedback starts coming in, that we're getting a representative response.
So 517 is about what, you mean 14% of the population? Or... I don't know. Just 1%? 1%? Or is that, is that kind of the national average?
Well, I don't, it's, it's not 1% response, it's, it's 1 resp, 1% of your overall population, but we look at, well, we're looking at it, it's a mathematical equation of how many do you need per size of population to generate the margin of error, and that's what we're set up to try to drive towards, so this is, this process is the same that we use all over the country and has been vetted at the highest levels, so...
...so 1% of this population responded, which is a very nice statistic, I think is pretty accurate, um, I love this concept. I, I appreciate you talking to us on the gray areas plus the mixed up areas, because I think if you can look at the blue and not look at those two numbers, those two together, because I think if you get complacent, you think that everything is fine, well, and probably wants to spend a lot of time.
Well, no, all the surveys that we do, I, I would get away from 1% of the population in terms of, we'll look, number one, we'll look at households, but also, but we can go over some of the math or, you know, how that happens, I'm not a mathematician myself, but have, have worked where we use the survey and have, have given countless survey presentations, so the, the normal approach of what I'm, what I'm indicating is that it's, it's a mathematical equations that for, and, and usually 400 is a magic number, and we got it down to over 500 for, for responses for your community, for your size of a community, again, it produces a plus or minus 4.3% margin of error, which is really good. Normally, we would say if you achieved a 5% margin of error, that's, that's standard. So it may seem like there are not a lot of responses, and how do we, how do we do that? But I assure you, for every other type of survey, now sometimes those people who do that are wrong, evidence Iowa and, and for the presidential poll at the end there, but for the most part, these, there's a tried and true method, a methodology of, of, you know, how many responses do you need? And, and again, part of that key is we're making sure we're, we're, the responses are in line with your demographics, in line with the census, so that there's not some group out there either by age or race, or as I indicated, that's left out. That's, that's, you know, one of the reasons why you...
...in your, 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 my, I love that you've cautioned us, because we do, we are doing a good job of, I have to admit, but I don't want to do so, we're probably in the blue, if we don't, we stop progressing, and I'm glad you, you cautioned us several times, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Let me, if there's other questions, but one of the things we did as a staff, we've poured through this multiple times, and there's a lot of data here, and there's a lot of good data, which we're proud of, but there's some things to work on, and we, you're right, we don't want to be complacent with the good things we're doing, we also need to fix some of the things that we could do better, and, and we prepared an executive summary, and I'm going to send, I'll email this to you guys in the morning, of just some of the issues that were brought up and some of our answers on how we, as a staff, are going to address some of these issues, and you'll see that in this report, and also you'll see it during the budget process, because some of this is going to require us to add more budget to things like dilapidated housing and some of the other things, but anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
I think everybody will agree that if you've looked over the data and everything, it kind of gives us a roadmap for the next 12, 14 months on some of the things that we need to concentrate on, and again, we don't want to get complacent, we want to continually do better, and for those of you that participated in the survey, thank you, I, I think you can see that your city's doing okay, but we've always got room for improvement, so again, thank you, there's no action needed on this particular item, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Josh, thank you for your hard work on this, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, again, thank you all for your patience and, and listening through that, I, I hope you walk away with a better feeling of how, about how your city's doing. We now move into discussion item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration of possible action, passing a resolution declaring the structure, or structures located at 8515 Northeast 16th Street, a dilapidated building as defined in the Midwest City Code, section 9-3, and abatement accordingly to the municipal code and setting of dates to demolish or remove the structure or structures from the site. Mr. Stroh.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon, mayor, council. I provided pictures for you on the agenda, the owner's deceased, the property's wide open, it's been a issue for our police to have to respond to, the next item is, I'm going to talk to it, both of them at the same time, they're both home by the same owner, both had the same issue, the second one actually was lit on fire, so I'm happy to answer questions on either one of them. The first one has been, has just under $6,000 worth of liens on it right now, so...
Owner present?
The owner's deceased.
Sorry you said that, thank you. Is anybody present on behalf of the owner? Once, twice, three times?
This is a public hearing, does anyone have anything to bring before the council considering this particular, particular agenda item?
Mr. Stroh, could you explain what's going to happen if you let this... Yes, the parties to be, family, whoever, will have 30 days to file something in district court to stop your actions if you agree with me, after that, then the city council's order will be for the city manager as designating me to have it torn down, and so we have received proposals to have the property scraped, the fence that divides the property to the south and to the east will stay, the large trees will stay, everything else will be removed from the property.
Getting debris from the house to...
Correct.
Is this property about to come out for tax sale?
I don't know, and it's in such bad shape, it, even if it did, it wouldn't, there's no, the, the stud walls are in there, but there's nothing else in there, there's no wiring, there's no sheet rock, there's no... There's no wiring, there's no sheet rock, there's nothing inside except trash. The, the lower windows are there, the upper windows are gone, the doors, frames are all kicked in.
Yeah, I just was curious if the tax settlement that we're on, it will come up to a tax sale after three years on the tax basis.
Once again, does anyone have anything to bring before council on this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Public hearing with discussion, consideration, possible action of passing a resolution declaring the structure located at seventeen twenty North Spencer Road, a dilapidated building as defined in the Midwest City Ordinance, section nine dash three, and abatement according to the municipal code and setting dates to demolish and remove the structure from the site.
Hold on just a minute. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council on this? Go ahead with your motion, Seads.
Second.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number four, Mr. Lyon. Thank you, Mike.
MP zero zero one nine, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of approval of the minor plat of Somerset Park Edition for the property described as a tract of the land being part of the southwest quarter of section thirty-four, township twelve, north range two west of the Indian Meridian described as lot thirteen and a part of lot twelve and lot fourteen in block two of Somerset Park Edition located at seventy-one oh five Hilltop Court.
Thank you. This is a minor plat that's before you today. There's a single lot in question that's the subject property, and the applicant is proposing to subdivide that into two lots. Both lots would retain their, their same zoning, which is an R six zoning district for a single-family detached residential. We did comply with state and local notification requirements and didn't, I think we received one phone call prior to the public hearing before the planning commission. The applicant was present at the planning commission, and there were some neighbors who showed up with, with questions about the potential uses of the site at the planning commission hearing. The, the planning commission ultimately recommended approval of this item unanimously, and action is at the discretion of council.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council considering this item? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one ninety-one, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action on an ordinance to redistrict from single-family detached residential R six to community commercial C, District C three for the property described as, without going through, located at ten twenty-one South Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is a, a zone change application that was brought by staff to correct a zoning issue that has existed with this property for, for about sixty years now. It was sort of made, made permanent when we updated the, the zoning ordinance and the zoning map in twenty-ten, so we are bringing in new ordinance to council to correct this issue. The zoning we're recommending is the same that was approved by council in nineteen-ninety-five, and we did comply with all notification requirements. There was no comments that we received either by phone, email, or at the public hearing before the, before the planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval of this item unanimously.
This is a public hearing. Once again, does anyone have anything to bring before council on this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, entertain a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number six.
PC twenty-one ninety-two, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action on a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential land use to medium-density residential land use, and an ordinance to redistrict single-family detached residential District R six to simplified plan unit development and S P U D for the property located at forty-six oh four Meadow Wood Drive.
Thank you. This, this is again a rezoning application. The applicant is seeking a simplified P U D zoning designation on this site to allow for some flexibility in our, in our design requirements. This lot had been developed as a single-family lot and then sat undeveloped for, for many years. So the applicant's seeking this P U D to construct a duplex on the lot and, and see the lot developed and, and put into use. As you can see in the staff report, the, the flexibility that they're seeking is related to some of the setback requirements. Staff has looked at the, the site plan that they're proposing for the site and find those, that flexibility to be reasonable, some of which is sort of in line with what the setbacks were when the site was originally developed. We did comply with all notification requirements with this application, and, hold on, go to the next page. At the time that we wrote the staff report, we hadn't received any comments. The applicant was present and addressed the planning commission, and there were no comments from the public at the public hearing. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council on this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one ninety-five, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of a resolution amending the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential land use to office retail land use, and an ordinance to reclassify the si, si, single-family detached residential District R six to a planned unit development governed by restricted commercials District C one for the property described, or the property located at one zero five zero five Southeast Fifteenth Street. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is also a rezoning application from, from a residential zoning designation to a P U D that's governed by an underlying commercial district. The applicant is, is seeking to develop the site as, as a sort of office park that would have some shared parking, and then the individual lots would potentially be available for, for individual sale. The applicant has agreed to comply with all of our screening requirements for a commercial property that abuts residential property. We, we complied with all the requirements for notification for this pro, for this application. There were no comments that were submitted in support or opposition to this application, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the item.
Once again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council on this particular item? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number eight, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one ninety-four, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action on a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from office retail land use and single-family detached residential land use to medium-density residential land use, and an ordinance to redistrict from community cur, commercial District C three and single-family detached R u, R six to planned unit development for the property located, and we'll have to do the whole piece of that. The property located at the land tract of the northeast quarter of section seven, township eleven, north range one west of the Indian Meridian. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This, this one is also a rezoning application to a P U D, to a planned unit development. The site in question is about nine point three acres, and the applicant is proposing the P U D to allow for the development of duplexes on the site. The proposed development would have road access to both Fifteenth Street and Westminster, and would be developed with a, I guess, a sort of limitation of ninety-six total units. They, they did list a, a minimum and a maximum size of the buildings for those units. That's not something that our zoning ordinance governs for duplexes, so it's nice to kind of see, you know, that, that there would be a floor in the, in the maximum to the size of those units. The applicant has, you know, submitted some measures to provide additional buffering from some of the residential properties, particularly those that are to the west of the, the subject property. And then in addition to that, our zoning regulations would require site-proof screening, which, which they would have to comply with. We did comply with all local and state notification requirements. At the planning commission meeting, we did have some, some comments from some adjoining property owners expressing concerns about traffic, safety. Some expressed that single-family residential development would be preferred, and one owner voiced a preference for the site to be zoned commercial. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, and action is at just the discretion of council.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council considering this item? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion?
Matt, you said that the developer made some accommodations on the numbers or something?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, you know, if, if they had sought a, an R M D zoning, they could have developed at a density of fifteen units an acre. Just in my head calculating this, they're probably somewhere around ten or eleven units an acre with what they're proposing.
And they've agreed to that, right?
Yes, they, they put that in the master design statement, which would, if approved by council, that would become part of the ordinance.
And the developer and the engineer are, are aware of that, correct, guys? So what he's telling us is correct? Okay, that's on the record.
I have a question also, Matt. That is my concern, I mean, just looking at the saturation of housing in the area. Now, I'm assuming that there's going to be an outlet for Westminster as well as Fifteenth with this project.
Yes, that is, that's what's proposed on the master plan.
Okay. Do you have concerns with regard to impact to traffic at, again, a limitation of ninety-one units, is what I believe you said? Is that, I mean, considering traffic can flow back both to Fifteenth and Westminster, I mean, is that something you're comfortable with with the design?
I, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that. I mean, they've got multiple ways, more than one way, in and out of the neighborhood, meaning that, you know, typically both arterial roads should be able to handle that additional traffic without being overburdened.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to give input on that, too. Sorry. Move to approve, mayor.
Okay, I have a motion and, and do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one ninety-three, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action on a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from office retail land use and medium-density residential land use to commercial land use and medium-density land use, and an ordinance to redistrict from a planned unit development to, planned unit development for the property described as a tract of land located at the northwest quarter of section eight, township eleven, north range one west. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This one is, is once again a rezoning application for a P U D. This one's a little bit more complex than, than some of the last couple ones, just because of the size and the, and the mixture of uses. So in this case, the applicant is seeking a commercial underlying zoning for a part of it and showing that on their master plan, and then they're requesting a medium-density residential type use on, on the remaining part that would stretch down the length of Westminster Road. So with, sorry, the, the, the P U D would, I guess, the, the part that is proposed for commercial is about twelve acres, would be governed by the C three zoning district. You can see in the, in the design statement that was submitted with this application that the applicant has made some efforts to, to restrict some of the uses that might be incompatible with the, some of the surrounding residential areas. So you'll note that they, they omit, they prohibited personal storage units, they prohibited dispensaries in that area. They also did allow by right for, you know, restaurants to, to sell alcohol, so if there was a restaurant that wanted to go in, if this ordinance was approved, they would not necessarily need to come back to council to seek approval for, for the sale of alcohol. When we talk about the, the residential portion of the development, it's about thirty acres in size, and the applicant's seeking approval for about two hundred and twenty-four units on that portion of the site, which comes to a density of about seven and a half units an acre. The, the mixture of residences that they were, that they're proposing are duplexes and townhomes for that site. They've included some additional buffering to try to, you know, provide some visual screening and, and separation from their proposed residential development and the existing Oakwood East neighborhood. Now, it is, it's important when we, when we talk about this project in particular, that we also talk about the existing P U D for this site. There's a, an old, older P U D that was approved for this site many years ago that is still applicable and, and in effect. So, you know, we're not looking at this project like we would with some others where, you know, if we don't approve it, it remains zoned for single-family detached development only. In this case, the, the P U D that underlies this, and, you know, that the applicant could seek building permits today for, does allow for a variety of commercial uses, but also apartments at a density of up to fifteen units an acre. So, you know, when, when we look at the, the context of what they're applying for, some of the things that they're willing to do to protect some of the residential areas that surround this property in the context of, you know, what the current zoning would, would allow, that is, that is the context under which the, the planning commission heard this application, and ultimately unanimous, or not unanimously, I think it was a five to one vote, recommended approval of this item. I will note that we did comply with all state and local notification requirements. We did hear from several of the neighboring property owners at the planning commission hearing. They were, they had issues similar to the last application, there were issues that they brought up related to traffic, traffic and safety. They also had concerns about some of the impacts it might have on the, on the, the existing drainage on this, on this site. I will note that the applicant's master development plan shows that they are going to stay out of the drainage areas. And then, I'm trying to think if there was any other concerns that were, that were raised by the, by the adjoining property owners. I know there was just generally, general dissatisfaction with the, with the housing types that were proposed for the development as well.
So if I hear you right, if, if this was to not pass, that tomorrow somebody could come in with a building permit for a multi-story apartment complex, and it wouldn't come back to us for us to do anything with it?
And that's, that's correct.
And if I'm hearing you on the numbers, it's about half of what, they're proposing about half of what the, the guy that has it right now could do.
Yes, that's correct.
There are a couple of things that I know got brought up at the planning commission, and Chief Whibley, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm going to ask you to... I listened to the planning commission meeting, and there was a couple of things that got brought up that if, I, I think if I was, if it was me, I'd want, make sure that, that there's correct. They're worried, the people are worried about the crime from the apartment complex going over into their area. Have you all experienced any issues with that?
No, I pulled up the crime statistics from twenty-twenty-two to current, and there's actually a decrease in crime from property crimes and crimes against parsons with, in, in the area I looked at was designator fifty-six, which is the square mile that surrounds the apartment complex in question.
There was also mention, I believe, of a fatality accident?
Yes.
Did that actually happen?
We had two on Westminster, just, just south of Fifteenth Street. One was a motorcycle that ran into a deer, and this was during nighttime hours, and then the second one was a vehicle that went left of center during nighttime hours, and the, the report's not done yet, but they think it was a medical issue.
Okay. The one other issue that would affect a lot of people, just not the neighbors there, is that the intersection of Twenty-Ninth and Westminster, from what I understand, was brought up, that it gets backed up in the afternoon for maybe a mile?
With the I forty construction and the eastbound on-ramps... With the I forty construction and the eastbound on-ramps nonexistent right now, it has caused additional traffic backups, which is, which is pretty lengthy. But, you know, alternate routes and with the completion of that, it looks like they're getting ready to open some of those lanes back up pretty soon.
They're going to change them, I think, today or tomorrow to...
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not sure if those on-ramps are going to be back open, but once they do, that will alleviate some of that, that traffic congestion.
Well, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm glad that you had the information. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forth counsel on this particular item?
Matt, I, one question. There was a very impassioned letter that went with, in our agenda packet, from some of the citizens hoping that we would deny this request. And in it, they mentioned, for some reason, like two or maybe even three times in the letter, it said pawn shops, we don't want a pawn shop in our neighborhood. Is that, is there any reason to believe that there would be a pawn shop in that neighborhood if we pass this resolution?
I mean, I, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I don't know. Are those allowed under just retail? I mean, they would be allowed, just based on the zoning categories that are, we classify those under retail. So it would, you know, if we allow, you know, you know, like a makeup store, we would also allow.
So they just, I just, they were just kind of randomly picking the worst possible scenario. I was wondering if there had been actual interest from a pawn broker to the shops here. Okay, thank you very much.
The thing I want to, you weren't here when this happened before, but within the last couple of years, the neighborhood to the east of the apartment complex came to us, and we did a traffic study to see if that, a traffic light was, could go in there at that point. The traffic information did not meet the criteria. So, when, remind everybody here, that's a promise we made to those people that if development went in out there, that we would look at that again to see if there was an additional light that needed to be. And that was, that, I believe that's...
No, if you're right, you're correct. Counselwoman Byrne, we'll, as this develops, we'll have to keep an eye on the traffic and do some traffic studies.
I have just a couple of questions real quick. On the C three, we, it doesn't allow like car dealerships, anything like that, right?
It's, so car dealerships are a special use permit in that district. So if somebody wanted a car dealership at that corner, they would have to return to council to request approval for that.
So we would have some control over that?
Yes, that's correct.
As far as medical marijuana shops, anything like that, is that covered in the C three?
It's, it's not, but they excluded that as a possible use in, as part of their design statement, which, just like with the other application, this will become a part of the ordinance should this get adopted or should this item be approved.
So we have some control over that then?
Yes.
Okay. Is the developer here? Can you come forward, please?
Please state your name and address for us.
Luke Roundtree, thirteen hundred North Bryant Avenue.
Thank you for coming tonight. Just a question on some of the townhomes, I believe. There's some indication that they might be three-story. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did, that's an option in there, yes.
Okay, so something that you're considering, but not a hundred percent at this time, or?
That's correct, and I believe there are, there, the residential units that would back up to our neighbors to the east, those are going to be designated as a single story. Am I correcting that? Or am I correcting that? So, sorry, that's my engineer. I just want to make sure I'm telling you that. But yes, so along that eastern border would be just the single story, and then the option for the three-story would be further west.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? This is a public hearing. If you've got something to add...
I'm just wondering about Stuart Sherrill. I live at nineteen hundred Honeysuckle Lane in Winsong. I'm wondering about Westminster being a two-lane street as we're adding the burden of extra traffic. My understanding is that Douglas is going to close between forty and two forty at some point and going to have to start looking at routes, alternate routes. And what triggers widening in a street to handle this kind of new traffic?
It's a good question, Mr. Summers. Do you want to weigh in on this one? Or Mr. Street? Oh, we got the expert coming. Kerry's coming.
I mean, my, from my past experience,
That's a good question.
we would typically rely on a traffic study of some kind to indicate whether or not, you know, turn lanes were warranted, whether, you know, makes sense to do a center turn lane to address capacity issues or whether it makes more sense to just do four lanes.
In the construction, though, of this unit, the setbacks and easements will be such that at any time in the future we want to four-lane Westminster, we'll be able to do so without tearing up property?
Yes, yeah, and as, you know, I didn't touch on it verbally, but in the staff report, we talk about how, you know, if this is approved, they'll kind of move on to plating next. And as they go into plating, we would make sure that as part of that process, the city, I guess, is dedicated, it is dedicated to the city an adequate amount of right-of-way for such improvements.
Thank you.
Consider a dressure issue about Douglas closing that's been pushed out to twenty twenty-seven now. Oklahoma City has started the process of three-laning post-road from twenty-ninth South. So we are one hundred percent plugged in on this traffic issue and what it's going to create when they shut down Douglas. So we need to be plugged in and watching that and monitoring it, and I assure you we will. Any further questions?
City manager, I'm sorry, just quickly, I know at one point we'd been talking about doing a roundabout at twenty-ninth and Westminster. Is that something that's still being considered?
I think it's being considered. There's those that would like to try a roundabout. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about that project. So there is a project that has just started design to look at twenty-ninth in that area, basically taking it from Douglas to Westminster and making those improvements. Part of that discussion, we've just started the scoping and awarded the contract for design through ODOT this month. So we started to talk about that. One of the discussions is a potential roundabout at that intersection. So we'll have our engineers look at that, see if that's viable.
And then the other thing, I think that, I know we know, maybe some of the citizens don't know, if I'm not mistaken, so twenty-ninth going eastbound on Westminster or coming back westbound, that's actually Oklahoma City's jurisdiction streets?
Yes, so in that area, once you get past Westminster, then we start to split the street. So north side would be Midwest City, south side would be Oklahoma City. And then in some parts, it transitions, and it's all Oklahoma City street. So it's, it depends on where you're at as you move east on whether that street is actually under Midwest City's jurisdiction.
Even that corner there at twenty-ninth and Westminster on the east side, a portion of that is actually Oklahoma City's, correct?
That's correct. The southeast corner, the main part of the property, we have some right-of-way, but the property is in Oklahoma City jurisdiction.
Rick, to kind of bring you up to speed on it, we've been in negotiations with Oklahoma City for the last five years on assuming that, because it jogs way back up, there's about ninety acres involved. We're going to reengage very quickly on trying to get that and then expand our jurisdictional boundaries to include twenty-ninth street, the entire street. So more to come on that. So we will control that, or hopefully.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any more questions or comments? Did you have something else, Mr. Summers?
Yeah, Vaughn reminded me, you know, any of these projects, such as our widenings of our arterial roads, you know, those are all done through federal dollars. So we do have to have, you know, meet warrants, traffic warrants in order to widen or add turn lanes, things like that.
If there's no further discussion or questions, chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into new business public discussion. There's several of you that have signed up to speak in this particular portion of the agenda. I want to remind you of several things. Number one, you have four minutes to address the council. Number two, since it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth discussion with you. However, if you bring forth a issue that we feel like we need to bring further light on, we will bring it back at some point as an agenda item. So with that being said...
Point of personal privilege.
You betcha. We're recessed for fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
Fifteen. Well, I can move it down to five. I correct myself, it's five.